Hello, welcome to our February council meeting. We're all excited to be here with all the ice and snow, I know. Huge turnout tonight, so thank you all for being here and for the folks who are here remotely. This meeting is being recorded by the City Council and GCTV nine. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time. Okay, we have our media friend recording. What? No, I know who you are. I said, we have our friend from the media from the recorder and the recording. All right, so our first order of business is a roll call of members. And Counselor Gordon is here remotely, which we can't see their box right now, so.
They are, they are on.
So we have to do roll calls for everything this evening.
Counselor Golub?
Here.
Counselor Gordon?
Here.
Counselor Master Tataro?
Here.
Counselor Bottomley?
Here.
Counselor Bullock is absent. Counselor Gilmore? Not attending yet. Counselor Perry? Counselor Healy has let us know that he will be late to the meeting, but he will also be attending remotely. He is not here as of now. Counselor Brown?
Here.
Vice President Garrett?
Here.
Counselor Minhaas?
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Toronto?
I'm here as well.
President Wondolowski?
Here.
Madam President, you have a quorum.
Fantastic. So first thing we'll do is the voluntary pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Our first order of business is to suspend the rules of procedure. Can I have somebody read the order on page five?
Sure. Okay, the City Council moved it to be ordered that the Greenfield City Council waive its rules of procedure, eight or and disposition of business to allow the agenda items to be taken out of order. Majority vote required.
A second now.
Any discussion? Fantastic. Let's move to a vote.
Counselor Golub?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Master Tataro?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
I don't believe Counselor Healy has joined. Not yet. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhaas?
Yes.
Counselor Toronto?
Yep.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion to waive the rules has passed.
Great. So the first item that we're going to take out of order is to go into executive session. So I'm going to read this so that we get it all right in the open meeting law. And I apologize to you all. We'll try not to be an executive session long, but annually we review the minutes that can be released and it's just how it is. So I'd also apologize for the guests who are here to speak. We'll try and move this along as quickly as we can. So that the City, Greenfield City Council will enter into executive session for reason number three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. Summary listing of the items to be discussed is federal court case of Sett- Woodbridge et al., City of Greenfield, docket number CA number 323 CV 30093-MGM. And reason number seven to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements to approve and review for the release of the City Council Subcommittee Executive Session Minutes for the following dates: February 4th, 2008, Ordinance Committee Executive Reason Number One; February 15th, 2012, Ways and Means Committee Executive Reason Three and Four; October 27th, 2015, Appointments in Ordinance Committee Executive Session Reason Was Not Provided At Time; September 20th, 2017, Executive Reason Number One; March 21st, 2018, Executive Reason Four; May 16th, 2018, Executive Reason Three; July 26th, 2018, Executive Reason Number One; September 19th, 2018, Executive Reason Three; June 19th, 2019, Executive Reason Number Three; October 16th, 2019, Executive Reason Number Three; May 16th, 2022, Executive Reason Number Three; August 16th, 2023, Executive Reason Number Three; August 21st, 2024, Executive Reason Number Seven; October 16th, 2024, Executive Reason Number One. The chair stated that the public body will reconvene in open session after the executive session concludes. So we will be back once this concludes. And Counselor Bottomley, can I have you read the motion on page 13?
It's page number thir- Page 13 is what you need to read. Yes, it's exceptionally similar.
The council moves that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council votes to enter executive session for reason number three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. The following is a summary listing of the item to be discussed: Federal Court Case of S. Woodbridge et al. versus City of Greenfield, docket number CA number 3-23-CV-30093-MGM. And reason number seven to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements to approve and review for the release of the City Council Subcommittee Executive Session Minutes for the following dates: February 4th, 2008, Ordinance Committee Executive Reason Number One; February 15th, 2012, Ways and Means Committee Executive Reasons Number Three and Number Four; October 27th, 2015, Appointments in Ordinance Committee Executive Reason Was Not Provided At Time; September 20th, 2017, Executive Reason Number One; March 21st, 2018, Executive Reason Number Four; May 16th, 2018, Executive Reason Number Three; July 26th, 2018, Executive Reason Number One; September 19th, 2018, Executive Reason Number Three; June 19th, 2019, Executive Reason Number Three; October 16th, 2029, Executive Reason Number Three; May 16th, 2022, Executive Reason Number Three; August 16th, 2023, Executive Reason Number Three; August 21st, 2024, Executive Reason Number Seven; October 16th, 2024, Executive Reason Number One. Roll call, majority vote required.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll call the vote.
Counselor Golub?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Master Tataro?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Healy? Not attending at the moment. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhaas?
Yes.
Counselor Toronto?
Yep.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes. It is 6:42, adjourning to executive session.
Good evening, we're back. So calling back into our open session, is Counselor Gordon back on our Zoom?
Yes, I'm here.
Right, thank you so much. So going back to our regular order, our next order of business is approving the January 7th, 2025 City Council Meeting Minutes on page six. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
And any comments? All right, let's move to a vote.
Counselor Golub?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Master Tataro?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
I don't think Counselor Healy has joined.
I'm here.
Oh, hello.
On the minutes, Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhaas?
Yes.
Counselor Toronto?
Yep.
And does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, so now we will welcome. I don't know if the superintendent's on, but I do see the Chair Johnson Musad, so we'll get communications from the schools.
Thank you so much, President. And Andy Paquette is here as well, our business manager. The superintendent is on a well-earned break right now. First, I'd like to thank Counselor Brown and Counselor Perry for attending our tour of the school buildings. It was on a Friday due to the availability of the buildings because it was a professional development day. We are aware that was maybe not the best timing for everyone. The superintendent wanted you all to know that if you want to schedule us another time on a weekend, for example, to visit the schools, she would love to have you, but we really appreciate Counselor Perry and Counselor Brown for attending. Also, we recognized Rachel Hogg at our last School Committee Meeting for winning the Greenspoon Award for Excellence in Teaching. And Shane Toomey, a Greenfield High School student, was the recipient of a $1,000 scholarship from the National Association of Student Councils. It was extremely competitive and we're really proud of him. He serves as our, one of our student reps on the committee. And we have started to have student representative reports. So different students are coming to us to present different aspects of life in the schools to us. And we were really pleased for our first presenter. It was Senior Devon Brown, who's the co-founder of the Students of Color Group at Greenfield High School. And he shared with us the curriculum that they've been using in the middle schools and things they're doing to try to address racial equity and racial discrimination in our schools. So it was a really, we were really pleased to have him join us and really impressed with his courage coming and talking to all these adults about the work that he's been doing. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And I also just want to recognize and thank you to the School Committee for inviting members of our Ways and Means to come to your meeting about the school budget. We really appreciate the opportunity. So thank you for starting more collaboration between our two bodies. And with that, any questions from the council? Counselor Garrett?
I just wanted to echo what President Wondolowski just said about being grateful to be able to participate in your Finance Committee's meeting. I know that there's going to be, your budget presentation is, I think, the 24th. And so looking forward to seeing kind of what comes forward through that. And, you know, as we move forward throughout the fiscal year, the work of the City Council to make sure that, you know, through our Ways and Means Committee and our overall budget process, that we are spending our tax dollars in the most efficient way possible. I'm grateful again that your leadership is intending to make us partners rather than just people talking past each other. So thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. And really want to appreciate our member Martini, who is the Chair of the Budget Committee and has made such enormous efforts to engage, not just with you all, but also with the community in general, with many, many different hearings and forums and opportunities for people to participate in the process. We're really proud of the work she's leading this year.
Counselor Toronto?
I would like to say that I echo Counselor Garrett's, Vice President Garrett's thoughts on that. I, I'm going to come from a different angle. I appreciated the invite to begin with. As I had heard at your School Committee Meeting, we were deemed as less than respectful in the fact that we are asking questions is what was being asked. And pointing out that presentations from the schools being the largest budget that comes through almost half of the entire city's budget and wanting more explanation is now deemed as less than respectful. I believe what is less than respectful is the response of the School Committee to the superintendent overall. The job of the School Committee is to represent the students, the citizens that elected those folks. And the thing that I have seen, sorry, turn of phrase, there's been a whole bunch of bootlicking. And I don't, I don't believe that that is appropriate when presenting a budget. And I certainly don't appreciate the comments that were made at the School Committee Meeting simply because we're asking questions to get the specifics and we are, have the right to ask those. And if that's the way that the collaboration is applauded, then that's a collaboration that I don't think is going to be effective going forward. I'm certainly not going to do it next year. I mean, I won't be here next year, which is great. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't attend that again. It was, I felt immediately put on the spot in the sense that the, the committee member of that moved around and sat right next to me like I was in an interrogation and blindsided by the questioning that was asked when it was supposed to be some sort of opportunity of how we would discuss budgets prior to the, the submission to the mayor. So we could have effective communication and that didn't happen at all. And I will stand by what I said at that meeting, that the school's presentation in the three years that I've been here has been the weakest budget presentation of any single department. Even the small departments do a better job justifying what they're spending, why they're spending it, and do not give us the blowback that the schools have in the last three years that I've been here. And we have fought hard to try to defend the schools' asks, even when the previous administration cut. We, we went out of our way to fund two years ago. We fully funded it last year and then got thrown through the mud afterwards saying we didn't, which was absolute BS. And if there's not going to be some sort of realistic collaboration in the future, then there's no, then there's no point. There's absolutely no point. Every other department head that we ask to provide us with information, with backup to what their asks are, we don't get any blowback in the same way that we do from the superintendent. And then after that, the School Committee, which certainly should be on our side for it. You are the legislative body, if you will, to the executive, I put in quotes if you can't see it, being the superintendent. The same way we are supposed to ask questions as a legislative body to the mayor. That is your function. That is our function. And to be shot down at every ask that we have had is, that is less than respectful.
President, may I respond?
You may.
Thank you. President, I, I guess I am in a, in a tough spot here. I find it difficult to respond to that. I, I think that it may seem that my concerns are about Counselor Toronto's comments and the characterization of bootlicking, implying that someone told him that he couldn't ask questions. That's just simply not true. But I think the bigger question is for you overall as a council, whether this is really the kind of, the kind of comment you want to have happen. Are there people on this council who don't like the way that we are spoken to sometimes here? I don't find it respectful at all. And I honestly do think we've made enormous efforts to be responsive and respectful. And then we come here and we get characterized as bootlicking and trying to suppress questions. I just, I, I just, I'm curious, President, what your personal take on that is? And if there are other counselors here who don't think this is the kind of communication you want to have with us, if you would please speak up.
So I, we can't see your face, which is, makes it really hard, Chair Johnson. But our counselors came in good faith. They were asked to come to the table and address, and they did. And so to, in open meeting, I think, characterize us as being disrespectful without maybe even talking to me first or someone else first, but going into public. So I'd like to see how we can tone this down and restart this, this relationship. Because I feel for Counselor Toronto. Again, came to the meeting, was asked to come and ask questions. And when he did, was then characterized as later as being disrespectful. So now he's reacting to that. He uses strong language. It's not the language I would use, but he and I are not the same. That's why we have a diverse council. And I don't, I don't think this is the right exchange for having this back and forth. But maybe you and I can sit down and have coffee?
I would really appreciate that. And I, I will say that, you know, I've heard that kind of argument before, that it's a diverse council and somehow because there are, like, I even heard one counselor say here at a meeting that, you know, there are essentially a lot of people who are in our community who don't speak very respectfully and that somehow the City Council represents that. But I honestly think there's, there's a higher standard that, that should be honored by us as representatives. And I, I do think it makes sense to choose language carefully. I mean, there's nothing like saying bootlick, licking and in any way is a helpful contribution to this discussion. So I would look forward to having coffee with you, President. Thank you very much for that offer.
Okay. Counselor Bottomley?
I feel like I have to address, since I was council president last year, my feeling was the schools were not responsive. We were asked not to ask questions. And after watching that meeting, I believe the exact words used were stay in your lane. And that's where there are problems because, again, our primary function is to ask questions. Because we are, I heard the word stakeholders used a lot. And somehow I didn't get the feeling like we, as city counselors, were considered stakeholders. And we are, and it's our fiscal responsibility to review this. We obviously, we don't run anything. We can't make line item decisions, but we can certainly question it. And there was no budget book presented, I believe, at that meeting. There were no numbers talked about at that meeting. And so I guess I just feel it's hard to have a collaboration when we're told not to ask questions. We're not given information. And we hear that even School Committee members are not given information after multiple times requesting. So if we're going to start a new relationship, I would hope in this budget cycle, that information become forthcoming so we can make real decisions and productive decisions for the city.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Minhaas?
I just wanted to ask if there, because I know we're getting around that time again. And last year, this was very, we had a robust discussion about this. Has there been any discussion on the School Committee or between yourself and superintendent about kind of shifting the trend that we have of a top-heavy budget and kind of paying our teachers adequately? Because that's what I would, has there been any discussion about that?
I think we, we're aware of the council's concerns about the top heaviness of our budget. What we've tried to communicate is that there are a number of items that are really state mandated that contribute to an administration-heavy budget. And I know that's very difficult, but for example, every teacher in our schools must be evaluated every year. They need, someone needs to go and attend in their classroom, watch them present and provide a report. There are all types of regulations we have to comply with and should comply with around people with disabilities and students, you know, who are English-language learners. We've had multiple times this year when the Department of Education, our number has just come up and they, they have different types of reviews that we suddenly need to comply with, requiring, you know, them coming and visiting the schools for multiple days at a time. So I guess what I'm saying is that it's very, it would be very difficult for us to meet those requirements without, without having the administration staffing that we have. We see our, everyone in our administration working extremely hard and doing all the things that are mandatory and, and having success at turning around our student outcomes. We are seeing improvements in many different areas around that. And so I stand behind our current level of funding for administration.
Any other? Vice President Garrett? And then I think I'm going to close this discussion because we.
Yeah, just really quickly. Chairman Johnson, our, you know, again, I just, we all, again, communicate differently on City Council. We all have different measurements of what we, what constitutes respect or not. But I think, you know, and I'm not trying to speak for everybody on the council, but I suspect that everyone here, in part, you know, is on the City Council because they want the best outcomes for the city as a whole. And the students in our city are absolutely vital for that. The structure of government that Counselor Toronto outlined, where you're the legislative branch to the executive branch slash administrative branch of the superintendent's office, is absolutely spot on. And we're trying to help you, is ultimately my main message. Our attempts to communicate with the School Committee, what you're hearing right now, the pushback that you may find to be difficult, is the kind of pushback that you have to hear if you're going to have a full understanding of all the stakeholders in the city. And again, we want to make, you know, budget season's coming up and members of the City Council are going to have to argue about the top line, you know, or bottom line, I guess is the language, of your budget. And so, you know, in the future, if there are conversations that could be had over coffee with President Wondolowski, I would love to see that as an outcome, rather than us getting to the point where there's frustration being played out on the City Council floor. And so, you know, again, our goal is to help you and I look forward to that collaboration that we're all hoping to develop growing in the future.
Thank you for that. And I, I just- And I just would like to emphasize that I'm very happy to have your questions, your concerns about the budgets and so on. It's not the content that is of concern to me. It is the mischaracterization of certain statements, and it's the characterization using, you know, shall we say, robust language that I don't think is really appropriate and, and doesn't contribute to a respectful relationship.
So noted. The last comment I'm just going to make is, when, when the counselors were asking about certain questions about the budget, it's because most of the city department budgets give us that information. And so if we're, if we're looking at that together, it looks like an outlier. So we want to make sure that we're evaluating you all in the same way so that we can make the best case for what you're putting forward. If that, if that makes sense. So that, that, that's my last comment. And thank you so much for being here, and I look forward to continuing the conversation. Thank you.
I'll just, if I, if I may, President, just to say that we really look forward to our budget hearing when, that, you know, really was not the intention of that meeting to replace the budget hearing. And there is budget detail available in the superintendent's office, as was noted in the, the notice that went in the recorder. So it is available to you. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. So next up is the mayor, city officers and employees. So first up, we have the mayor. So welcome, Mayor.
Just a couple of things. We're already talking about budget. That's our, my primary focus right now. We've been actively meeting with department heads to get out a well-balanced budget, thanks to the Capitol Committee. They've met several times in January and developed their recommendations, which we're going to get those off to you, what was voted on. And at some point, I'll be putting forward some more capital requests. But it's a very, going to be a very detailed, oriented mindset on that budget. I've reached out to the MMA for guidance just this week, due to the concerns that we all have probably about federal funding cuts. And also spoke with somebody from the DOR today as well. So we're seeking as much guidance as we can as we go into this year's budget. City Hall, we aren't having any more water and sewer problems, so that's a good thing. We have had a few problems with the heat. It's pretty hard for the mini splits to keep up with the heat on these bitterly cold days, but we're continuing to watch that. We're going to be rotating some of our offices in the near future, including opening an office downstairs that hasn't been utilized for a couple of years. And I'll be sure to announce these changes before they take place or as soon as they take place. The winter carnival, I just wanted to take a moment to thank Kristi Moore and the wonderful recreation team for the 103rd Winter Carnival, which was a great success despite some significant weather challenges. And many departments helped out with that. Fire, police, DPW, Mida, everybody working together to make sure that that was, that the place was safe. Beautiful ice sculptures and a, it was a fantastic way to bring the community together during this bitterly cold month. Additionally, the community preservation is, will be reviewing 12 projects. There'll be a meeting Thursday, February 27th. Those are all on the website. And they actually really seek citizen input on these projects to see what the people here would like to be funded. So I would suggest that you review some of that on the website and make your, make your opinions known if you're sitting here as a council member or in the audience or watching this later on television. That is how the Community Preservation Committee makes their decisions. So that's about it. If you have any questions.
This is more of a comment, but the Community Preservation Committee, if, that's a busy day, and I know I won't be able to attend, so I may make written comments. And I would just like to speak to the vast public that is watching this meeting and encourage them to do the same.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Counselor Golub?
Did I miss the, the downtown parking configuration improvements is on the list?
You didn't, you did not miss, that was very observant of you. And I don't have that with me, that little piece where I was going to talk about that. And I was not going to try to ad lib, because as you well know, it's not my best thing.
That's good.
We can talk about that at another time. Thank you, Counselor Golub.
I appreciate not ad-libbing. I don't see any other questions for the mayor, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So next we have Chief Strahan. So something that we're trying to do is plan out ahead, so it's not just random city departments that show up. So each month, you'll see a different topic. And I'll be encouraging through the committee chairs to also recommend if there are committees that you are, departments that you all want to hear from so that we're getting, you can get your ideas, questions ahead of time, instead of just on the fly. So thank you, Chief Strand.
Thank you very much for the invite. I guess I'm the first department head to have five minutes to just give an update about the fire, about my department, the fire department. And I thank you all for allowing me to speak for a couple of minutes. I could go on for hours about the fire department, but I'll keep it very brief. As you all know, we moved into our fire, the new fire station over a year ago. It is a great location, a beautiful building. We are very fortunate to be there. Couple of things that have not occurred yet that will occur. The museum is still in the process of being designed. That was not part of the project. The, building the space for the museum was part of the project. The museum itself was not part of the project, and it was funded through donations and fundraising. And we have a curator that's helping us design it, so we want to do it right. So it's been pushed off a little bit. With that, a local resident in town wanted to do something special for the fire department. They had family members in the past that had served on the fire department. And so they have donated to the fire department and authorized the building and creating of a sculpture monument for outside of the firehouse, which should be here sometime in the spring. We are really grateful for the anonymous donation that we received, and there'll be more coming on that. We applied for and received a federal grant to replace all the thermal imaging cameras in the, in the fire station. They were getting to be 10, 15-plus years old, having multiple failures with them. So we're going to be adding 13 new thermal imaging cameras to our fleet, which makes a huge difference, and we don't have to ask for in capital. On a more somber note, a couple of weeks ago, we had a tragic incident within the city. Our thoughts and our, and our prayers go out to the family that was affected by that. But I did want to talk a little bit about it for 30 seconds or so to say how proud I am of being the fire chief for the city of Greenfield and the response of the fire department. But it goes beyond that as well. Our police department, our DPW, residents, businesses, all stepped up in this time of need where it was probably one of the most dangerous, challenging incidents that I've been on, and I've been on a lot in my career. And everybody did admirable. And the risk that our responders, police, fire, our ambulance, they took to try to save this individual is nothing short of heroic. And I couldn't be prouder of our public safety entities in this town. It's very difficult. Now the challenge is, is that this was something that could come back and haunt some of our responders mentally down the road. So our, it's, our mission right now is to keep an eye on our, our first responders and make sure that their, their mental health is taken care of with, with a tragic incident like this. We wrapped up an assessment center for the deputy chief's position yesterday. I hope to have an announcement by next week's Public Safety Commission on who the candidate that will be recommended going forward. So we are super excited. For those that don't know, we have not had a deputy chief in the department since probably nine years now. It has been very challenging from an administrative standpoint, not having a deputy. So we are excited to finally get that position back. It has been my priority to make sure that we build our staff on the floor up before we would even consider another administrative position. It is not a new position. It is an upgrade to a, an officer's position. And I'll talk more about that in our budget hearings. I'm sure there'll be some questions about that going forward. Our call volume, as, as was stated, it's, that I stated publicly, has gone up significantly in the last five, five years. Last year being our busiest year, we did about 3,600 emergency calls, about 62% of them of a rescue-type nature, most of them being medical calls. Our fire calls are up as well. We did about 1,300 fire calls. So overall, the, the, the call volume within the fire department is just going up and up. And I'll give you an example. Sitting, waiting for y'all to return from your executive committee meeting, I ran the numbers for today. And today alone, they have responded on 18 emergency calls. When I first started, we were lucky to have 18 in a week, and they did that today. And that's the new norm. So the, the fire station is, or the firefighters are incredibly busy. They stand ready to respond on, on whatever the need is, but we are getting busy, and I'm super proud of the effort that the firefighters have. And so that's my update, unless you want me to go into the ask for tonight.
Does anybody have any additional questions before we talk about fire trucks? Counselor Golub?
I'm just curious, why are the calls going up like that?
That's a great question. And we try to analyze that, and we look at the responses, and we try to, we try to do trends, and we try to see where the, why the calls are actually increasing. The medical calls are simple. We, we've gotten involved in the last 10 years with running an ambulance service, and our ambulance service is getting busier and busier daily. So that's a big part of it. I think part of that EMS delivery that we provide is we have an aging population, and we have a lot of needs for medical concerns within the community. And so we're not the only ones that are seeing a dramatic increase in the medical calls. Our primary provider, which is AMR, they are seeing a dramatic increase in the, in the amount of calls as well. So it's affecting everybody. I think as a county, if you listen to the radio at all, you'll, you'll hear that every ambulance in the county is, is, seems to be crazy busy. So we're still looking at the trends. I don't have a definitive answer on that, but that's what I could attribute it to. On the fire side, we do a lot more mutual aid, not only out, but, but receiving in, just because the, the volume of volunteer firefighters is, is not there anymore, including for our department. We used to have 30 active call firefighters. We have two. And we try, we try to put on call firefighters. We just, the, the level of training, the commitment, the time commitment, and everything else is, is, is very challenging for volunteers nowadays. I do want to caveat something that I missed in my report, talking about why we're seeing some changes. And I, and I do want to highlight a little bit of a change that I saw this year. I don't know if you all are aware, but we had some pretty significant wildland fires throughout the Commonwealth. A lot in Western Mass that our department assisted with. We were part of statewide fire mobilization, and, and we responded to it. The reason why I bring this up is because I don't want to be an alarmist, but I am a realist. And the fire activity that I saw was fire activity I haven't seen in my 30 years of firefighting when it comes to wild fires in urban interface. And some of the fire activity that I saw in Munson and Great Barrington was just absolutely crazy, and it's stuff that you don't see around here. And I think that's the trend that's going to continue. I'm only highlighting this because the only difference between those fires being real disasters and, and the large fires that they were, the only difference that we saw was that with the end of November and the temperatures were about 50 degrees. If we had another 20 degrees on these fires, or 30 degrees hotter, which you would typically see in August, September, in October, when you see fall fires, these fires would have been disastrous. And so I highlight that because I think you're going to see more and more natural disasters affecting what we do in emergency services.
I have one question.
Sure. Counselor Perry?
Chief, can retired firefighters volunteer as on-call and volunteer?
So first, it would, it would, could hamper their pensions. The, the other thing is, is that there's a mandatory out age for firefighters. Public safety is, 62 is mandatory out.
So I don't want to get the cart too far before the horse on this, but if, if you want to just briefly outline the need for the new ladder truck, and then we'll come back to it when we come back to that motion, but...
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I'll keep it real brief. We highlighted it last night at Ways and Means. Here's, here's the bottom line with, when it comes to the ladder truck. I'm very sensitive to the fact that the fire department has had a lot of capital asks that have been fulfilled over the years. And, you know, it was not an easy decision to come back and ask for this ladder. The ladder was approved a year ago with capital improvement, so it was in, under normal circumstance, it would have gone through the council last year for, for approval, but because of some changes, you're getting it now. So this had gone through the approval process before now. Before the fire station was even a real, a realistic, I started talking about the replacement of this ladder when I first took over as chief. As a matter of fact, Maria Burge, which is one of the previous counselors, reminded me tonight that, I remember when you came to Ways and Means 10 years ago and told us that you got to prepare for the ladder truck. So everything that we did with our fleet, we did, and I was very clear from day one over a decade ago, every time I talked about it, we're making these changes to pave the way for today. And what I mean by that is we redid our fleet, we reduced three trucks and put them into two trucks, saving a little bit over $1 million. And every time we made changes like that, I would say, this is in preparing for the big purchase, right? And the big purchase is the ladder truck. At the time, when I first started talking about this, the truck we wanted was about $1.4 million. We talked about refurbishing the truck. Before I hit the 20-year mark, we talked about different options, and they just never came, came to reality. But I kept saying that we've got to prepare for the ladder, and we're doing our part financially to try to... financially to try to get us in that position. Fast forward to today, the original ask was 2.5 million dollars. 2.5 million dollars replaces basically the fire truck that we have now with an identical type of truck with a platform on it. Unfortunately, funding is a little shy. And the mayor, with her strategy, which I applaud, is we're not borrowing money for. If we were to borrow a capital expense for this truck, we're looking at five percent over the life of ten or twenty years, which is hundreds of thousands of dollars on this project. The mayor found somehow the ability to come with some money for this project. But it, it's, it's a little short. It's, it's about 1.6 million dollars. So 300,000, it's going to come out of the ambulance revenue account, which still gets us to about 1.9. What that does is it buys a different truck than we're used to. It won't have the platform on the front of it. The platform's a working platform for the firefighters. This will be a straight ladder. Now, that, my firefighters are used to working off a platform. So they have a little reservation about working off a ladder. There are two people in the fire department that remember working off a ladder. It is safe to do, it is efficient to do. Yes, it's harder to work off a ladder, but we work off of ground ladders all the time. And this is just an extension of a ground ladder. It's a bigger ladder with a more stable platform, ladder way to work off of. What it does do though, is it changes our ability to respond differently with this piece of equipment. The ladder truck we have right now primarily functions as what we call in the fire service, a truck company, which means it's ladder work and that's all it does. This new truck, by being a, it's got a shorter wheelbase. It's about the size of an engine. It's got more of a reach, a hundred and seven foot. It's got a pump on it with more water. We can actually use and press this truck into service as a, as a backup pumper. If we have a failure, a mechanical failure of a truck or it can fill that role. It also is more maneuverable. We can get it to more areas and it gives us some advantages. It does have some disadvantages over the ladder, over the platform. But this is the truck we can afford. And working with the mayor, working with the finance director, looking at the projection moving forward for finances with the city on big capital projects and also recognizing that there are many departments in this city that have important capital needs as well. I agonized over whether or not this was the right route and came up with the decision. It is a, the appropriate truck at the appropriate cost. It is efficient, it's effective, and we will do our mission just as well with this truck as we would with a platform. So.
All right, thank you so much.
I should mention, that's the financial part of it. The need part of it is, not only is the obvious need where if you, you need a ladder truck to perform a rescue of somebody on a higher floor at a structural fire, you want that ladder truck immediately available. And you do not want to count on your neighbors or somebody else to bring it into your town. That's the human piece of it. The other piece of it is, is that ISO, which governs everybody's insurance rate for their houses, but specifically more import, just as importantly, the commercial properties, that's how your insurance rate is, is set. One of the requirements from the fire protection standpoint is that if you have buildings that are three or more stories and you have more than four of them, you have to have your own ladder by ISO ratings. Look downtown, we have well more than, than three buildings, or four buildings that have more than three stories. We have a lot. So it is a critical, it is a vital piece of equipment. Our current truck is 25 years old. It should have been replaced in five years ago. But this happens in any city, in any town where we have to push things back. I'm very concerned over what the cost increases we're going to see as we move forward. The typical fire apparatus manufacturer right now is seeing anywhere between two and four percent increases a quarter. So I think this is the, the appropriate time in the most cost-effective way. And I don't think you're ever going to be in a position to have this. I don't want to say inexpensive, because I don't take that lightly. 1.9 million dollars is not inexpensive. But we wait another three to five years, it's going to be close to 3 million dollars at that point. So I hope I can, I answered everybody's questions. I appreciate the dialogue we had last night at Ways and Means, some great questions. I really appreciate the questions. This is not an item that anybody should be taking lightly, including myself, when I bring it forward, so.
I'm going to go to Counselor Golub and then Vice President Garrett.
Hey, I appreciate the work that you've done. I had, I had the question of, do we need to be that expensive? And I hear that you, you and the mayor have worked hard to lower the, lower the costs. And I appreciate the sacrifice that you're making with this. And I also appreciate you not being alarmist, but you being a realist and bringing up the very real concerns about fire. And that we're, that we're facing that we've never faced before. And so I don't expect a comprehensive answer right now. But I'm, I am curious about what work is being done to, I mean, if, if there are wildfires, a ladder truck will be supportive, but I'm sure we'll need much more than that. And what we can do as a community to protect ourselves to the best of our ability. I imagine this is a community-wide effort and I'm curious what's being done around that. And, and again, that may be a, a future conversation, but I really am grateful to you bringing up that conversation. And I, and I welcome us all being part of it because it's incredibly important.
Yeah, so I, I'll absolutely be happy to dive into that down the road. I will tell you some initial activities that we've done as, as, as the fire department in Franklin County is we've seen this need starting to evolve. So Franklin County developed what we called a District Nine, which is Franklin County Hand Crew, which is specially trained wildland firefighters. That departments have three or four individuals that are specifically trained to do firefighting, wildland firefighting. And we're not talking the simple go out and put water on, on a fire. These are high-end activities where they, they can do backfiring of fires for containment. They, they dig fire line. We have four members, four or five members on the team, made up of all Franklin County. They went all, all fall season working fires. And we're the first one in the Commonwealth to do that. We are now part of the statewide fire mob plan. And there are multiple counties trying to mirror our team that we put together. So that was our first step and I'm pretty proud of that.
I'm going to go to Counselor Healy, who's online, and then back to Vice President Garrett.
Thank you. I was just wondering if a lease purchase option was looked at as that would allow us to break this over a couple fiscal years.
Great question, Counselor. I appreciate that. Yes, every avenue of finance was looked at this. We have been successful with doing lease purchase of vehicles. We are currently about halfway through the lease purchase of the Engine Three, our newest fire engine. That was under a lease. That is in my operating budget. I think it's about 65,000. We pay, pay a year on that. The increase in the rates since we did that have put that really not, not wise to do that at this time. The rate increases have, I think, put that out of, out of that contention. The other part of that is whether you lease a vehicle, you bond a vehicle or whatever borrowing method that you have, you are, you are increasing what you owe for debt. And talking with the mayor, she's very concerned over the amount of debt that the city has and does not want to take on any debt in any form, including the lease agreement. Which, by the way, doesn't make a lot of sense financially at this time.
Thank you.
Vice President Garrett?
Thank you. You mentioned the home insurance rates and commercial real estate rates would go up if we didn't have a ladder truck.
Insurance rates across the board, not real estate, yep.
Do you have any sort of sense, I know you're not a, you know, insurance adjuster, of roughly what that would look like for individuals in the city? You know, would it be like a 10% increase? You have no, you don't know?
I, I don't. I, I know when we, when we try to improve our insurance rating every time we get graded every five years. We've been only successful in doing that. We were, we were a three. Over about fifteen years ago, we went up to a four. For the average homeowner, it's not, it's not a lot on your insurance. It's a very small amount. It's the businesses, the commercial businesses that actually see the savings. I, I unfortunately don't have that information.
It would not be reasonable to expect you to, but thank you for trying.
Counselor Perry?
I just want to repeat what I said last night publicly. The presentation you presented, presented us in writing was outstanding. I have, I thank you for all the research and, and that you pulled together to present a, because I, I was so cynical when I first saw the thing from across. But then when I read your report and you went line by line, subject by subject, and you answered every possible question, I just want to thank you and let you know how appreciative we are of the work you put into this. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We, it's been a, a ten-year report in the making, so.
He's had a little time to work on it. All right, thank you so much for, and I know we're due for a break. Can we do the public comment first? Because I also aware that we made these folks wait for an hour. So and it's not that many. Cool. All right, so we're going to move to the public comments. And I know you'll be in the audience should we have questions, we're going to come back.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Isn't addressed in here? So the first person for public comment is Sid St. John. I'd like you to come up, just introduce your name, where you live. And each person is going to have three minutes and we do have a timer and we're going to cut you off. And we're not being jerks.
Hi, I'm Sid St. John. I'm on Highland Avenue here in Greenfield. And you might have heard me making a little bit of noise recently about, I was supposed to go to a public hearing for a special permit tomorrow for the operation of a cut flower farm at my house on Highland Avenue. And so I'm here for two reasons. Is one, I wanted to let you all know that that application has been withdrawn. And so please don't come to the meeting if you had comments. I'm happy to receive them via email or social media and happy to answer any and all questions that folks have for me regarding that. And number two is the reason why that application has been withdrawn is because after a conversation with Mr. Eric Torog and Mr. Mark Snow, we were able to determine that, assuming that I can reach certain financial goals with the cut flower farm, I actually will fall under Massachusetts state law, which will protect, which will basically grant me the same privileges that farms over five acres are protected in Greenfield. So I just, you know, thank you to all of the support that I've received and all of the really great questions that I've already received about that. And I'm really looking forward to hearing if anybody, anybody watching or anybody watching later has any further questions. My email is really, really easy to find about that farm. I don't know if I'm like allowed to plug it here, but that's what I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, thanks, that, that's so amazing. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
So thank you. Great.
All right, thank you very much.
So the next up I have, and I apologize, Arminay Margosian. You plan to do it together because we have both of your names on the list?
Right, he, he likes to sit with me, it's okay. And then he'll, he'll speak after I speak.
Okay.
He's going to have his own three minutes. Oh, gosh. Anyways, I know, he's a good guy. He's a good guy. My name is Arminay. I live at 186 Petty Plain Road. And for the past three years, I've been withstanding a lot of noise. Ambient noise is usually between 60 and 70 decibels. I've had a professional decibel meter reading at my house of 110 decibels. So I have had very high readings. I've had to put up, it's, it's affected my health. And, and so when, when, since about, almost about a year ago, I started attending the licensing board meetings because the police kept telling me that they couldn't do anything about the noise, that I had to go to the licensing board. Well, I've been attending the licensing board every single month, I think, except yesterday. But I've been attending every single month. Now, in January, because of that really cold weather, I attended via Zoom. I waited to speak. I had my hand raised. And when I was called upon, I spoke for less than a minute. And the, the mayor's proxy, the chief of staff, Erin Anhold, was there. And she, she silenced me. She says, it's enough with you. And it's, you know, you, you just be quiet. And I hadn't even spoken for a minute. I urge you all to go and look at that recording. Because if it's an open meeting and I'm allowed to have three minutes to speak, then I deserve that. I deserve to be respected. I, I deserve not to be bullied by the mayor and her staff. And I am, I'm suffering. And so I'm trying to have, I'm advocating for myself. And so I expect the people to be respectful of me and also that, that I'm taking time every month to attend that meeting. I take notes and I have been very meticulous about how I, how I discuss what is going on. Mike Nelson, the president of the Fairgrounds, is having all these events there that are, you know, the, the licensing board just keeps praising him for, you know, even when things happen that are wrong, he doesn't have to experience it. He and his family are not having to experience that level of noise and the disruption to their lives. And so it's like they can always, they always say, oh, it's so wonderful, Mike, that you recognize post the event that something's gone wrong. Well, I had to live through that. Nobody's saying to me, I'm sorry you had to go through that. Nobody apologizes to me and nobody ever respects me for what I have to bring to the table. And it's enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want me to stay? You want me to join?
My name is Ted Hindman. I am Arminy's husband, as you would all know by now.
I assume you're at the same address?
Yes.
Thank you. Just our rules.
Yeah, we live on the same address, 186 Petty Plain Road. I was going to say that. And well, the other thing I might add too is that when Arminy was trying to speak up about her concerns, she was told that, oh, I hear this thing every single time. And the reason why Arminy's speaking up is because she's not being heard. She's being ignored and just like Arminy described it. And I think that if something is really hurting or harming us, then we have to speak up until it's heard. Otherwise, they're just, if we don't speak up, then who will? And I also want to mention something about Wormtown. I know that with Wormtown, there has been, it's very clear that they've been dealing and using illegal drugs over there. And then there's also a lot of this lewd and lascivious behavior out in the open in front of everybody. And I find out and seeing pictures that there are little kids there. And if all this lewd and lascivious behavior is going on, then the kids are going to be traumatized by it. And And it's just not acceptable. And I would also add too that with the drugs, I know some of these psychedelic drugs come in the form of candy, or cannabis, or whatever, and then a kid picks it up and eats it, and then what do you think's going to happen? And also, it's like this Wormtown has just been supported by the authorities. And the question I'd have to ask is, let's say the ultimate day comes in which somebody dies of an overdose on drugs, and it turns out to be a child. Or what about with all this lewd and lascivious behavior, somebody gets raped, or some unwanted moves on them? Are you going to say, "Oh, well, oops, I'm sorry"? Or is that going to motivate people to do something about it? And I just have to say what has to be said. This is not, it shouldn't be a free-for-all. And I think Wormtown specifically, it's very clear that there's all this stuff going on. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Next on the list, I have Pamela Goodwin.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Pamela Goodwin. I live at 54 High Street over at the Wildon. It occurs to me that I believe former President John Bottomley was out of the area when we did our reorganization. I just want to take a moment to thank both he, as the president of the former council, and also Sheila, and recognize all their great hard work. So, thank you so much for that, and I'm thrilled at our new people that we have. I wanted to take the opportunity to say that this has been one heck of a winter that I think we've all been experiencing, and it certainly isn't over yet. I want to praise the DPW because I've been out in these streets in all kinds of weather, day and night. They've been a bit of a challenge, but I find that they've done an excellent job of keeping the streets clean as best as they can. In addition to that, I know that the big mountains of snow are, are big sheets of ice now, and they cannot be removed. And I know it's difficult to park downtown, and I was down there recently. And I believe that if there is any ticketing at all whatsoever, I was told that it would be just a warning, because it's kind of dangerous to climb yourself up to these slippery mountains to try to reach the meters. So, I just wanted to let the public know that. I'm also a volunteer at the Warming Center over at the Salvation Army on a pretty steady basis. I want people to know that I am very struck at what a community of unhoused people we have. They take care of each other, they're helping each other. I have had no incidents whatsoever as one of the two people volunteering to stay with them, and most of the shifts I work are 7:00 to 11:00, but occasionally I've done 11:00 PM to 3:00 AM. And I find them a bit challenging if they're in a different type of mood, but otherwise, I just love those group. And I go over regularly, even when I'm not there, from time to time, and just check in, or bring extra coffee, or say hi to them. And I welcome anybody else who would like to volunteer. I know we've opened up again, and you don't have to have any special qualifications. You always have another person there. Occasionally, the police stop in and check on you. You're often working with either a dispatcher, or an EMT person, or somebody from the fire department. So, I just wanted to say I find that a very rewarding opportunity. And I think, and I have heard from Shandel Diaz, that it's rare to have so many different agencies and organizations pull their sources and be able to keep this up and running successfully. So, I want to say that's an amazing feat on behalf of the mayor and all of the agencies that have pulled together. There must be at least six or eight different agencies pouring into that. Thank you.
Thank you. The last we have online is Stephanie D'Uclose.
Hi, Stephanie D'Uclose, Chapman Street Precinct date. I actually want to touch upon a couple of things on the agenda. There is some changes to the charter I have some concerns about that are more than just errors in family and employee, as kind of highlighted in the agenda packet. There's an addition on Section H I am concerned about. It says the commission shall apply the principle of progressive discipline, except for those instances where more severe punishment is warranted. There's some changes in the days that someone may come and be a commissioner. Some of the ways that they are striking out seems as if they are taking away the Public Safety Commission's, being stripped of its authority of their oversight of the police and the fire departments. The, the agenda items I was referring to, it's on number 10, motions three and four. Also, it says that there's a scribner's error on the mayor's section, but an entire section of that is missing, so I have questions as to whether or not that is, you're only modifying that, and you, and that it was intent, or if it was intentionally left out of the agenda packet, as it's going to be eliminated. And I think being in a charter review year, I think the stakeholders of the commissions that you're changing, or some of these votes, should be tabled. Also, I'm really disheartened by what we've got going on in the school committee, not working with, or the, the school. It's hard to figure out which one it is that's not working with our city council, especially seeing how the qualifications to graduate now are D minus. So, I'm wondering if there's any oversight at all. I mean, if it's all going to administration. I'd be equally upset if I was an elected official and I was asking questions about our budget. I think those answers, you guys represent us, so I think those questions need to be answered for the people who foot the bill. I also wanted to make note that the pub, the recommendation coming from the planning board, that meeting was in violation of open meeting law, didn't have public access. I have filed an open meeting law violation on that. It should have never continued. I had requested three times to have that calendar link corrected. They continued with the meeting. The vice chair, Jeff Saucer, was in charge, so I don't blame George, who did, at the prior meeting, shut it down because of the exact same issue, without having public access to that meeting, and we just changed that in our charter. So, I'm asking that some of these things get tabled. We do have a charter review year, and that it's very important not to omit or add language to our charter without it going through A and O and the proper channels, and to make sure that a proper discussion can happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. And I don't see any other online, so this concludes our public comment. Thank you, everybody who showed up and made your feelings known to the council. We really appreciate you, especially on a cold, icy night, a little bit hard to do. Can we take a five-minute break? Thank you. Okay, I know we all want to be here till midnight, so I'm looking forward to that.
All right.
Okay, if we go past 11, drinks are on. Catherine, thank you. Fantastic.
Back at 9:07, ask if counsel.
If we say it in public, is it true?
Ask if counsel.
And do we have Counselor Gordon back online?
Yes, I'm here.
And Counselor Healy?
I'm here.
Thank you. So, now we're moving to the public hearing and second reading. So, that is on page 12 of our packets. In accordance with home rule charter, the Greenfield City Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, February 19, 2025, at 6:30 PM at the John Zahn Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street, and Zoom, and I'm not going to read all those letters and numbers. And the public hearing is for the purpose of transferring 8,000 from Veterans Department Ordinary Benefits to Veterans Department Monument Account, repurpose $53,497 from High School Capital Building Account to replace and upgrade boilers at Greenfield High School, and purchase a fire department ladder truck for an amount not to exceed $1,900,000, with $1,600,000 to be paid from capital stabilization, and $300,000 to be paid from ambulance revolving account. The city council may consider the same on Wednesday, February 19, at 6:30, at John Zahn Community Center. And I do not have anybody signed up for public hearing. Does anybody want to step up? And we are opening this at 9:09 PM. Can I ask Counselor Toronto to read the second reading?
Sure. Thanks for doing the first one. That's great.
I'm just giving you a break because I know what's happening in a month or two.
That's true. Transfer second, city council second reading, transfer $8,000 from Veterans Department Ordinary Benefits to Veterans Department Monument Account, repurpose $53,497 from High School Capital Building Account to replace and upgrade boilers at Greenfield High School, purchase a fire department ladder truck for an amount not to exceed $1,900,000, with $1,600,000 to be paid from capital stabilization, and $300,000 to be paid from ambulance revolving account.
All right. We are at 9:10, and we are closing the public hearing. All right. Now, we're moving into motions, orders, and resolutions. We've already done the executive session, so we will be going to number two, which is release of confidential legal opinion, which is on page 14. Do I have someone who can read that for me, please?
I can do that.
Thank you.
The city council moved that be ordered that the Greenfield City Council votes to release the legal opinion requested by the council from City Attorney Gordon Quinn dated January 13, 2025, regarding a proposed zoning amendment submitted by citizens petition pertaining to Section 200-7.18 accessory dwelling units. Majority vote required.
I'd second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? No, that was Counselor Toronto. Seeing none, let's vote, please.
Counselor Goleb?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Master Tataro?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhaus?
Yes.
Counselor Toronto?
Absolutely.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes, and yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great. Moving to the amendment to the charter, can I have Counselor Goleb read that, please?
Order number fiscal year 25044, the city council move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Charter, Article 3, Executive Branch, Section 38, temporary absence of the mayor, subsection A, acting mayor, be amended as indicated below with bold text to be added. Section 38, temporary absence of the mayor, A, acting mayor. The mayor shall, by a letter filed with the city council and a copy filed with the city clerk, designate a qualified city officer or a city employee to exercise the powers and perform the duties of the office during the temporary absence of the mayor for periods of less than 15 business days, and to serve only when the needs of the city require, and only to the extent necessary under the then circumstances. And that the city council further instructs the city clerk to submit the approved vote to the legislature of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and request said legislature to amend the city charter. Majority vote required.
Second then.
Any discussion, and if you have context, that would be appreciated.
Oh, well, this, oh, yeah. This, I don't, this was not, if you're asking me for context, I believe that we discussed this at committee chairs. This did not come to A and O, at least not while I, not this month. But I do have two of a question and a point. One, there was concern from the public about whether this was amending further parts of the charter, and I just want to point out that this says in the first phrase that this is amending Article 3, Subsection A. So, hopefully that'll assuage concerns. And then the second question that I had is that when I looked at the charter and this first paragraph of subsection A, the word employee is already there, but it appears to me that the piece that's being changed is that it's being changed from 10 business days to 15 business days. And so, I don't know that it matters that what word is bolded, but just for us to understand, it seems like that's the intent of this change. Is that accurate?
Can I ask Clerk Scott to expand on this for us, please?
So, during the previous charter review, not ordinance review, charter review, there were recommendations that came from the charter review committee to the council. They were voted on by the council. They were approved by the then executive body, forwarded to the legislature for review and governor's approval, and I'm really shortening this. When it came back from the governor, there were two words missing. One of the words was employee. The other word is in the next order. Any changes to Section 38? Were previously approved by the council. This order is correcting the omission of the word employee that happened at some point during the legislative review. Scribner's error, we all make them. So, this just corrects that one word. The 15 business days was previously approved for amendment by the council and was signed off by the governor.
Vice President Garrett?
Clerk Scott, would you mind just defining what a scribner's error is for folks?
It's a typo.
Thanks.
So, basically, they left out the word employee and were putting it back in.
Right.
Counselor Toronto?
Just for a quick reference, because it was in our backup documents that on page 17, it's even highlighted. So, if anybody wants to look at the agenda to see what is under question, it, it kind of spells it out pretty, pretty clearly, that nothing else is changing, as Clerk Scott indicated. Nothing is changing. We're just putting the word back in that should have been there.
Counselor Goleb?
Also, just want to take this opportunity to make clear that there is no charter review happening this, this year, that the city council will be undergoing a review of all the ordinances, but the ordinances and the charter are distinct. And for everyone listening, just welcoming input about the ordinance review, but no charter review this year.
Thank you for the clarification. So, and given that we're going to vote on the next typo, same rules apply. Are we ready to go to a? Are we ready to go to a vote? Okay, great.
Counselor Golub?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Master Tataro?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhos?
Yes.
Counselor Toronto?
Yep.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes, and yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, so now we're moving to amendment to the Greenfield City Charter, Article 6. Would you like to read that one as well?
Yeah. Order number fiscal year 25045, the City Council, and I'm going to not read what strikes, what's striked out, and I will read what's bold. The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Charter, Article 6, Administrative Organization, Section 611, Public Safety Commission, Subsection E, be amended as indicated below with strike-through text to be removed and bold text to be added. Section 611, Public Safety Commission, E. The commission shall review written complaints made by the public concerning the operation of the public safety departments and the conduct of employees of both those departments. All, all written complaints received shall be forwarded to the chief of the department to which they relate, and the chief shall investigate or cause to be investigated said complaints and submit his findings and recommendations in connection therewith that he deems appropriate. The commission shall adopt such rules and regulations consistent with this ordinance, the civil service statute, and the police and fire collective bargaining agreements as it deems necessary to establish procedures to be followed in filing of written complaints by the public, investigating complaints, and holding hearings concerning complaints made to it regarding the operation of the police or fire department and the conduct and officers and employees of each department. Citizen complaints shall be considered part of the employee's personal file. The commission shall apply the principle of progressive discipline, except those instances where more severe punishment is warranted. H, no member of the commission shall be a mem, shall be an employee of the police department or fire department, nor shall any member of the commission, of the commission member's family be an employee or retired member of the police or fire department within 36 months of the commission member's retirement date. Family member shall mean father, mother, spouse, child, stepchild, grandchild, brother, sister, brother-in-law, sister-in-law, nephew, niece, and grandparent. And that the City Council further instructs the city clerk to submit the approved vote to the Legislature of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and request said legislature to amend the city charter, majority vote required.
Second.
Typo. Must be a scrip error.
Just a typo here, and not in our charter.
So who was the second? Sorry, sorry.
Was that a real Counselor Toronto?
Did no one else see bother-in-law? Not brother. I hope that that's just on ours and not actually in our charter. That's why it's-
We will look at that.
Okay, thank you. I am a bother-in-law, I'm sure.
Let me see.
Any other discussion? Is that your hand up, Counselor Golub?
Yes. I, there were a couple of words that I got stuck on, and I may know, but then I don't know where they were. I, can we amend a couple of kind of typo errors that are in this still? Does that disrupt the whole process, or is that simple?
I think that depends on if it's a substantive change or just wordsmith.
The only change that feels substantive is amending his to their. That feels substantive. The others, I realized that there was like an of and an in missing as I was reading, but-
Clerk Scott can answer that?
So I was looking, and I'm unable to find it in the moment. There is a section of our charter that says if the reference to a person is a gender reference, that it means it's not specific to gender, it's just filling a space. However, there could be a suggestion, and I don't think it, it couldn't be done at this moment, to make documents gender neutral in their terms if someone wanted to consider that in the future. But you couldn't do it right now as a global amendment to the charter or the ordinances.
Wha, what would that s, sound like? Are you, I, I'm, I don't 100% understand what that would sound like yet. So for example, yeah, can you sa, can you say, what would that sound like? Like, I move to amend the entire charter to, to make, turn any gender, his or her into their?
Into a gender-neutral language, something, it would be something of that sort, yes.
Okay.
But any amendment like that would have to go through a public hearing before it could be voted on by the council.
So, so I'm wondering if for the, just the, for both time and because this is a bigger issue, maybe set that aside because I, I probably guess that there's lots of problems with gender non-neutral language throughout the charter, that this isn't the only instance.
This is not the only.
So maybe that's a future thing, Counselor Master Tataro?
I have to agree with Clerk Scott. I've read it in the charter somewhere as well, where there overrules any gender-specific reference in the charter. It's there, I've read it, I can't tell you where it is, though. So it's there. I mean, we could, at some point, just change everything. I don't think tonight's the time to do it, but but it is covered in the charter.
Yes, you may.
So just because it's covered in the charter doesn't mean that's the way it should be. I think the correction, a, a global correction to the gender-neutral terms would be the best way to go, but not tonight.
Great.
Who, I will bring this forward at another, very soon.
That sounds good. One more comment from Clerk Scott.
So the bother-in-law is a typo by my office. If you look on page 17, it does say brother. Yeah. We will correct that.
Although I'm sure that's what I'm going to start calling.
We're all going to be bother-in-laws now. So we have a motion in a second.
So we have a motion in a second, so let's vote, please.
Counselor Golub?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Master Tataro?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhos?
Yes.
Counselor bother-in-law, Toronto?
Yes, absolutely, and thank you for that.
I couldn't not. President Wondolowski?
Yes, and yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Right, so we made it through the typos, and we're going to appointments, so back to Counselor Golub.
Okay. Order number fiscal year 25043, the City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section 210 affirms the following appointments by the mayor. Elderly and Disabled Taxation Fund Committee, Mandy Witten, term to expire December 31, 2028. Human Rights Commission, Linda Goldstein, Paul Jablon, both terms to expire December 31, 2028. Public Safety Commission, Kelly Dixon, term to expire December 31, 2027, replacing Amy McMahon for remainder of term. Majority vote required.
Do we have a second? Thank you. And, and how, how did this come out of A&amp;O?
Unanimous positive recommendation.
Thank you. Any discussion? So I want to again thank the folks who are willing to serve in our city. It's really important that we continue to have more voices and not all the same people in every single commission in the city. So thank you to these folks. And it's time to vote?
Counselor Golub?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Master Tataro?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhos?
Yes.
Counselor Toronto?
Yep.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes, and yes.
And the motion passes unanimously.
All right. So now we're at ways and means, orders, so transfer 8,000? And if you could read this, Counselor Toronto?
Sure. Order number FY 25037, the City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Disorga, an order to transfer $8,000 from Veterans Department Ordinary Benefits to the Veterans Department Monument Account, move that it be ordered that the City Council approves the transfer of the sum of $8,000 from Veterans Department Ordinary Benefits to the Veterans Department Monument Account to fund monument purchase, majority vote required.
Do we have a second?
Second?
And what was the decision out of committee?
Uh, that was unanimous positive.
Any comments? All right, let's move to a vote.
Counselor Golub?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Master Tataro?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhos?
Yes.
Counselor Toronto?
Yep.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes, and yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, to the high school boilers.
Order number FY 25041, the City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Disorga, in order to repurpose funds from the High School Capital Building Account to replace and upgrade boilers at Greenfield High School in the amount of $53,497, move that it be ordered that the City Council repurpose funds from the High School Capital Building Account to replace and upgrade boilers at Greenfield High School in the amount of $53,497. Majority vote required.
Second.
Uh, unanimous positive out of committee.
Any questions or comments? Can I move to a vote?
Counselor Golub?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Master Tataro? Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhos?
Yes.
Counselor Toronto?
Yep.
President Wondolowski, do you wish to vote?
Yes, and yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
All right, last but not least, fire trucks.
Uh, order number FY 25042, the City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Disorga, in order to purchase a fire department ladder truck for an amount not to exceed $1.9 million, with $1.6 million to be paid from capital stabilization account, and $300,000 to be paid from the ambulance revolving account, move that it be ordered that the City Council purchase a fire department ladder truck for an amount not to exceed $1.9 million, with $1.6 million to be paid from capital stabilization account, and $300,000 to be paid from the ambulance revolving account, majority vote required. Unanimous positive recommendation from committee.
Did I hear a second?
Oh, sorry.
Second?
Okay, let's open it to discussion. Counselor Minhos?
I mean, it's kind of a large amount, but like the chief came up and explained, I think it's something that's important and it would benefit the city as a whole, so.
And I think we're ready to vote?
Counselor Golub?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Master Tataro?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhos?
Yes.
Counselor Toronto?
Yep.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes, and yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
All right, so we have petitions, which we have none, report of committees, uh, no committee reports at this time, no unfinished business, no old business, but we do have new business, so we have notice of a zoning amendment proposals, and we don't- which is usually read by the EDC chair. Counselor Healy, are you able to do that? Thank you.
Yep. So the following zoning amendment proposals have been submitted to the Greenfield City Council for consideration. Zoning Amendment, Section 200-14, Central Commercial District, CC 200-48, Mixed Residential Business Uses, Table of Dimensional Requirements, submitted by Counselor Michael Master Tataro on January 29, 2025, and zoning amendments to Sections 200-56, accessory dwelling units, 200-61, site plan review and approval submitted by the Planning Board on February 14, 2025. Do you want me to go into the specifics on each zoning amendment in this meeting? Or give an update on where we're at?
Uh, no, that's not necessary.
Okay, perfect.
There will be more to come later.
For sure. I'll say there's a joint public hearing on March 6 about these topics.
Okay. Any motions for reconsideration? And I want to, I, I want that to be no. Thank you all, and we need to vote on adjourning, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, let's vote on that.
Counselor Golub?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Master Tataro? Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhos?
Absolutely.
Counselor Toronto?
Yep.
Counselor, President Wondolowski?
Yes. Greenfield City Council is adjourned at 9:36 PM. Thank you all.